Good evening, everyone. Happy August and welcome to tonight's public hearing. I am now calling to order August 1st, 2017. Madam Clerk, do you mind calling the roll?
Thank you and good evening. Councilmember Steve Leonardis.
Here.
Councilmember Marcia Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Barbara Spector.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rob Rennie.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Mariko Sayoc.
Here. And if I can ask all of you to join me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our last regularly scheduled public hearing was June 20th. And so since that time, if I could just ask council members to report on anything that the other council members need to do about, if you were representing the town in any other business, Councilmember Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor Sayoc. Since our last meeting, I attended the Santa Clara Valley Water District meeting on behalf of Councilmember Spector. I have nothing to report back.
Councilmember Jensen?
I don't think I have anything to report unless I'm forgetting a Policy Committee meeting.
Two.
Oh, two Policy Committee meetings.
Okay. Since our last regularly scheduled meeting, we did have two West Valley mayors and managers meeting, various ceremonial events. And I did want to acknowledge that during this recess, we did get the correspondence from many of you about our traffic and wanted to let people know ahead of time that that is scheduled for our September 5 meeting. So for any and all who would like to discuss the cut-through traffic, please share and provide those comments on September 5 or provide written comments as you have been doing until then. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. On July 12th, I attended the senior picnic with you. Also today, I met with a citizen over LAFCO Commission that meets tomorrow. And then I did several things for the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Authority where I'm chair. I was given notice by the CEO that he is leaving us at the end of August. So on July 10th, I called a special meeting of the Board to set in motion the hire process for that. On July 11th, we had a subcommittee forum during that meeting. And on July 11th, we met to work on the interim CEO selection. And then on July 30th, we met with the two interim, internal interim CEO candidates with the subcommittee. Also, on July 31st, I attended a meeting of the different community choice aggregators hosted by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District in San Francisco. It was all the chairs of all the CCAs in the area. And also this morning, our subcommittee, which is a different subcommittee for hiring the permanent CEO, met to discuss with our recruiter and set in motion the process for that. I think that covers everything.
Thank you. Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. Since our last regular meeting, I had met with developers and community members with regards to pending development projects and attended the town's block party.
Okay. And Ms. Pravetti, a town manager, report?
Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce to you our new library director, Ryan Baker. And you'll have an opportunity to talk with him at future meetings. I'd also like to introduce to you our new transportation and mobility manager, Ying Smith. She comes to us from VTA, so she has a lot of understanding of how to work with that particular agency. So we're really thrilled to have two new staff members as well as other new staff. But we, since they are brand-new, we wanted to make sure that the community knows that those positions are now filled. In addition, we are wrapping up summer reading, and so we are giving out lots of summer reading prizes. So if you haven't yet collected your prize, please come to the library and do so. And then we've also just recently started the recruitment for this year's Leadership Los Gatos. The application is available on the chamber's website, and applications are due September 11th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we are going to start our consent agenda. We have 11 items on consent. The items that are placed on here will be taken care of in one motion, usually tends towards approval unless something is pulled. At this time, I don't have any cards for any item to be pulled. So council members, would anyone like to make a motion? Councilmember Jensen?
We have approval of the consent calendar excluding item 8 per the desk item we received withdrawing that matter for our consideration.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Okay. At this time, we are now at verbal communications. If you are intending to speak tonight, I do ask that you fill out one of our speaker cards. There are several opportunities for you to speak. You can speak on any public hearing that has not already been closed. So I do want to remind everyone, for those that are here for the North 40 Phase 1 application, we are not taking verbal testimony on that, but we are taking verbal testimony on items 12 through 15. And for those who would like to speak under verbal communications, I do want to remind you that this is an opportunity for you to share information with us. However, it would not be appropriate for us to engage in conversation since this is an item, the item that you raised may not be, has not been agendized. If you would like to talk to us one-on-one or would like an answer, we do have our information available with our clerk so that she can pre-arrange meetings for you. Okay, with that, Robert McCartney?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm sorry if I'm out of order, but I'm here to speak regarding the weekend traffic, which I believe is getting to the point that it's destroying the town. And therefore, as the council seems to have realized, you must act. At the present time, I think that it's only construction that's keeping the Almond Grove area where I live from the same gridlock that we see now on Blossom Hill, Los Gatos Boulevard, and around there. And in fact, there are a great many warm days left after Labor Day, so I don't foresee this problem going away anytime soon. I hope that the town will be able to apply your many resources to the solution. In my view, it might help to have the Los Altos Hills No Through Traffic solution applied to places like Ridgecrest, Massal, Tate, Bachman, and Almendra. That's not enforceable, and of course, it can't, it can't work on Santa Cruz and on Los Gatos Boulevard. Finally, just an idea of my own, perhaps a little public relations work could be valuable if television cameras were invited to observe our traffic on a typical, say, Thursday morning as opposed to a typical Saturday morning around 10 or 11 o'clock. That might bring to people's attention the fact that Waze, which seems to be the application drawing the people into our town, is a bad application. And since it causes people to be drawn into a gridlock situation in warm weather and also places them in danger from road rage and other bad driving habits that we observe when people get frustrated, I think it would be valid to suggest that it's a public danger, and it might be wise to remove it except in extreme cases such as we had this past weekend when South 101 was closed down due to a fatal accident and people were trying to get to the Garlic Festival. So I strongly urge your attention to this matter because I feel that is extremely serious and definitely must be taken care of. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor? Mr. McCartney is?
It's actually just a request for staff. If you could provide information on September 5th about the Los Altos No Through Traffic solutions that they're using.
Thank you. Rusty Reinhardt?
Good evening, Mayor. Town council members, staff. My name is Rusty Reinhardt. I'm a member of the Los Gatos Kiwanis Club. We will be hosting the 2017 Fiesta de Arts and are excited about the change from the town, from the Civic Center to downtown. Terry Martin and I are co-chairs of the Fiesta. Our club has hosted the Fiesta as our major fundraiser for the last 21 years. Last year, we were approached by the town to move our event downtown. We were indeed encouraged by the possibilities that the move would have for our event and for the community. In January of this year, we signed an agreement with the town to stage the event on Santa Cruz Avenue and on the Town Plaza. As part of our reach-out to the community, we have notified all businesses along Santa Cruz Avenue, including all restaurants. With the move downtown, we envisioned a food court on the Town Plaza, and we thought our reach-out would bring some interest. Unfortunately, the interest was insufficient for us, for that to be a viable option for us at the Fiesta. Faced with the likelihood of not having a designated area in the Fiesta for food, we reached out to Roaming Hunger two months ago and contracted with them for food trucks at the Fiesta. For the past two years, we have used Roaming Hunger at the Fiesta here at the Civic Center. The food trucks have been well-received and enjoyed by our sponsors, attendees, and vendors. There has never been any health or safety issues. Last Thursday, two weeks ago before, before our event, we received a special event permit, and within that permit was a prohibition against food trucks. You can imagine, we were shocked and puzzled as to why this was inserted in the permit. We have had food trucks in the Fiesta, like I said, for the last two years with no complaints. I am not aware of any provision within the town code that prohibits food trucks in the town of Los Gatos. In fact, a quote "food provider" end of quote, by definition of the code, includes mobile food vendors. With proper permits, food trucks are allowed under the code. Also, there is no prohibition in our agreement with the town that prohibits food trucks at our event. Because we serve alcohol at the event, we have been advised by the town police that we need to have sources of food at our event. We are in an untenable position of attempting to comply with the police department while at the same time being told that food trucks are not allowed. Denying us a designated source for food at the event seems to be arbitrary and unsupportable. It hurts our town and a 94-year-old institution in this town, the Los Gatos Kiwanis Club. Randy Chen is with the chamber here, and she's with me tonight, and she will confirm that most, all the restaurants in town do not have any objection to food trucks at our event.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt.
Thank you. Any questions? I'm willing.
Mr. Leonardis, Councilmember Leonardis?
Thank you, Mayor Sayoc. This is a question for staff.
Hold on. Any questions for Mr. Reinhardt? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So Mr. Reinhardt mentioned that there was nothing in the town code that prohibits food trucks. Is that true? And if there is something in the town code that prohibits food trucks, why were food trucks allowed the last couple of years? And why did the terms of their agreement change from when we initially signed them up until two weeks ago?
Well, you know, those are a lot of important questions, and this is verbal communication, so I don't want to get too much in the details. But we are working with the Kiwanis to resolve these issues. Food trucks are not permitted in our code. We do not have the regulations to allow them. The reason they were allowed at the lawn is because of the distance between the lawn area and Santa Cruz Avenue and Main Street where many of our restaurants are located with the new location on our major corridor with many restaurants. We were hopeful that the attendees at the festival would be able to enjoy our local businesses without having competition at the event. So this is one of the issues that our police chief is continuing to work through with Kiwanis, and we are hopeful for a amicable resolution.
And Ms. Pravetti, if you could just, because it has not been agendized, if there's any further movement, if you could just keep the council with any details or changes?
Of course.
Thank you. Randy Chen?
Hi, Randy Chen. I represent the Los Gatos Chamber of Commerce, and I would just like to share with the council that we did do an informal poll of the Los Gatos restaurants at our last, last Los Gatos Food and Wine Meeting. The Los Gatos Food and Wine is a subcommittee of the Chamber of Commerce consisting of our member businesses who are in the hospitality business, restaurants, hotels, and wineries. Approximately 15 to 18 of our restaurants were in attendance, and we did poll them. As Rusty said, they did, Fiesta de Arts did invite all of them to participate, but for various and sundry reasons, most having to do with staffing issues, none of them are. So the restaurants in attendance at our July 19th meeting did not object to having food trucks on that one weekend of August 12th and 13th for Fiesta de Arts.
Thank, yes, Mr. Schultz?
Would it be possible for the chamber to provide us with the list of the, was at that meeting that agreed to not, to allow for the food trucks?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And John Shepherd, I'm sorry, Ms. Chen, you have a question from the vice mayor. Is it of the speaker?
Just another question of staff.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If that's all right.
So, thank you, Ms. Chen.
Go ahead.
It seems that the real issue might be that the food trucks will be taking business away from the restaurants because of proximity, because of the relocation of the Fiesta de Never seemed to be a problem the last couple of years. Where would the food trucks be located where they would be such a threat to the downtown businesses, the restaurants?
So let me recap a little bit. We do have under Chapter 14 where we, certain restrictions against food. We don't allow food preparation in the streets. It talks about no push carts without a, a permit. And then it also talks about certain restrictions, and it talks about 500 feet away from a school, 150 way, 150 feet away from other businesses. I'm not sure where their proposal was to put that, but you're, you're right. The main, the main issue here that we have to make certain is, is that by having food trucks, you don't have at your first meeting in September, 15 businesses standing up saying, "How did you, how did you allow food trucks? They took away all our business." So that's, that's what we're trying to balance is, is that, that ability to allow for the food trucks, but making certain that the businesses are okay with that. So we'll work through the issue. We know it's an issue that we have to resolve, and hopefully, we can come to a solution.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schultz. John Shepherdson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this was a, I'll read from a letter that was published in the San Jose Mercury News in April of 2016. It was a letter to the editor by myself. "In the late 1990s, the state passed pension increases, which were big for police officers, 3.3% per year. Los Gatos has lots of officers per capita, and many in the community are wedded to, to having them. Los Gatos matched the state pension increases. In 2003, we had zero unfunded liabilities. Now we have $54 million in employment-related liabilities and no money to fix 17% of our roads in poor condition. The answer: big developments to support the big police department. Hence, we have exploding traffic and financial pressure to approve large projects. If the citizens continue to want the big-budget police department, then they must accept the cost: heavy traffic, big developments, lack of funding to fix roads, and a de facto name change to the city of Los Gatos. It is simple cause and effect, and we have little justification to complain about the loss of the charm of Los Gatos when we as a community were the authors of our own doom." So what's an alternative to big developments? A special parcel tax to fund the police department. It may not be politically popular with some, but if we have a parcel tax that, that pays for the $15 million for our police department, then we, then we would have funding for things that I would prefer, like the Danville busing program, which I think would be highly popular with the community. Cuts traffic by 30%. A community center, a senior center, a youth innovation center, bike lanes, funding for local services, and a way to keep our town in terms of addressing traffic. So we have a choice. We can continue the way we're going and tax, or we can make a change in our budget. And it shouldn't be just the police department. I think it should be all services. But if we're not going to move there, then, and we're not going to address the long-term debt, then we're going to need to raise taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherdson. Would you like to submit that for the record, or is that your own personal copy?
Sure. Sure.
Okay.
For the record.
Okay. So that concludes verbal communications tonight. We now move to other business, starting with item number 12, which is a recommendation for a records management program policy.
The item before you tonight was heard at your policy committee and then was referred here tonight for your consideration in evaluating our administrative policies when it pertains to records management. One of the things I discovered is that the town currently does not have a policy regarding records management. As staff, we feel it's a best practice to have a policy that explicitly states that the council's intent is for staff to have best practices when it pertains to records management. And in discussions with town council, we've also determined that it would be good to explicitly state that this council views electronic data as official records. We brought it before your policy committee, and as such, your policy committee approved staff's recommendation with some suggestions and some edits, and it is before you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Any questions? Okay. Seeing no questions, this is an item that the public can weigh in on. I see no movement, so I will close testimony and look to the council. If no questions, any comments, and ultimately, a motion? Councilmember Jensen?
Make a motion that we approve the draft records management program policy that's contained in our staff report and redlined.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Five-zero, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Andrews. And so, item 13.
Thank you. We kept your policy committee busy this summer, and as such, the item before you is also a referral from your policy committee. At a prior council meeting, it was suggested that staff look into how the verbal communications portion of council meetings is conducted. One of the concerns is that with the amount of communication that occurs during that section of the agenda, it perhaps doesn't provide enough opportunities for other members of the community to speak during other parts of the agenda. So what staff brought before your policy committee was originally in a suggestion to perhaps limit the amount of speakers. Their recommendation was instead to keep it to 30 minutes, which in essence would mean 10 speakers if each speaker used their three-minute maximum. What staff and what the policy committee is attempting to do is to not curtail public speech, but rather figure out a way to have an equitable distribution of public speech during the entire agenda process. And so the item before you now is the recommendation from your policy committee to do exactly that, to curtail the initial verbal communication section to 30 minutes. And then if at the rest and the conclusion of the remaining agenda, if we still have members of the public who would like to speak to items that have not been agendized, that then we open up a second verbal communication section to give an opportunity for additional public comment.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So what discretion does the mayor have in this? Let's say there's two speakers left at 30 minutes. Can the mayor then say, "I'm going to give another five minutes"? Or can the mayor look at his/her cards and say, "I'm going to change it to two minutes for everybody so I can fit it into 30 minutes"? What discretion does the mayor have?
Thank you for your question. The policy as it's currently written in other sections gives the mayor a lot of latitude in how the agenda can either be re-agendized, reformulated, or even use discretion to extend certain periods of the rest of the agenda. So the mayor currently does have quite a bit of latitude in the existing policy.
Yes, Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Was there some meeting or event that caused staff to feel as though verbal communications was too extensive?
Actually, this was a recommendation that came from council at the conclusion of one of the meetings. I can't remember the exact meeting. I believe it's notated in the memo, but I believe at the conclusion of that meeting, a council member directed staff to just look into it. One of the initial things we looked at, and our clerk provided information in the memo, was looking at if the verbal communications happens at a different portion of the meeting. What our clerk found was that most of our other municipalities have it currently in the agenda where it is, and so it appeared as if that was a pure best practice. And so then we started looking at equitable distribution during communication items throughout the whole agenda.
As it's proposed now, if someone doesn't get to speak within the 30-minute allotment, when would they speak?
So we would then move on to the rest of the agenda. At the conclusion of those items, if there are still cards, or if there are members of the community that are present that would like to speak, then we would just open up another verbal communication section.
At the end of the meeting?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Would anyone in the public like to weigh in on this matter? Seeing none, I look to the council for further questions, comments. Ms. Dorner? You know the drill, fill out the card, and you have three minutes.
Hello, Angelina Dorner, proud resident of the Almond Grove. I just wanted to make sure that some allowance is made for especially the elderly or disabled people who come to these meetings and expect to be able to leave after their verbal communications. Personally, I try to stay here for the whole thing, as I don't like being rude and walking out, so I don't mind going at the end. But I do think that there should be some kind of a procedure where you ask people with special circumstances, children at home, or whatnot. where you ask people with special circumstances, children at home or whatnot, if they would be able to go first. And if no one objects to that, I think that would be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, no other speakers moving forward. Ms. Smith?
Sorry, I just had to come up because I think I'm one of the culprits. But I like that our council is so open to the democratic principle of you're all representing us and listening to us all by our emails and our verbal communications and everything else that you're doing. I appreciate it so much, and it's what makes the town great. And I realize that it can be long and hard and tedious to look, but some subjects require, before you start discussing them, it's really good to be able to know that we had the opportunity to communicate with our representatives.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no one other movement, I will close public testimony and look to council members for further questions. Councilmember Leonardis and then Councilmember Johnson, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Seok. I'm inclined to leave the current policy in place. Public speakers are my favorite part of the meeting. I love hearing from the public. I would like it when there's 100 speakers on a topic. I like it when they come in at 7 o'clock and they can speak, and then they can go home to their families at a reasonable hour. I think it would break up the flow of the meeting if we limit it to 10 speakers for three minutes each for 30 minutes, and then we have other people have to wait at the end. I see all kinds of problems with that logistically. I think that well enough alone is well enough alone. If it takes longer to get through meetings, we're getting paid by the hour up here anyway. So I look forward to your voices, and I hope that we can keep it the way it was.
Councilmember Johnson?
As member of the policy committee and the person that caused this to be referred, I can say that to the, Ms. Spector who asked, there were two consecutive meetings where we had large groups of people who were organized to come and speak at verbal communications, which took quite some time, such that the regularly scheduled agenda didn't start, I believe, on one occasion until about 9:00 or 9:30. That said, acknowledging Mr. Leonardis' comments and that, yes, we want to hear everyone, we also want to hear those people that are scheduled to be on the agenda. And just as there might be someone who has kids at home for verbal communications, there might be somebody who has kids at home who's item number three, who we don't get to. And on one of the meetings, we did actually continue the last item because we didn't have enough time to get to it. So the thought was that we have a regularly scheduled, noticed agenda that people are coming to and are thinking that they're going to appear at a reasonable time and get their item continued or considered. If there is an hour and a half of verbal communications on any particular item or all kinds of items, then those, take, those regularly scheduled things take a backseat to that comment period. Comment period is fine, and the policy leaves in place absolute discretion to the chair. The chair could put the entire section in the middle, could put the entire section at the end, could put it at the beginning, could break it up, could limit speakers to one minute, two minutes, depending on how many there are. This policy doesn't change that discretion that's always existed and will always exist after. Really, from my thought as a policy committee member and why I scheduled it, is that I thought it was unfair when there was essentially an organized verbal communication that took a very long time, that those people who were there to have their item heard then got pushed back for something that wasn't on the agenda. And this was my attempt, just go to the policy committee and the staff and look what other people did. And frankly, the other people that put it, the cities that put it at 15 minutes at the, put it at the beginning, some limited it to 15 minutes, some limited it to 10 minutes. So 30 minutes is actually was more than what we saw in some other cities. But the idea was, as Mr. Andrews said, was to make it equitable so that those people that were scheduled to be heard could be heard.
And just one point of clarification. The 30-minute period can entitle as many speakers who are willing to speak within 30 minutes. I just use an example of 10 if each one of those speakers used a maximum of three minutes.
Thank you for that clarification. Yes, Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have to say that in all the years I've served on the council and on the planning commission before then, I have never experienced an instance when verbal communications went too long. I think if I think back on recent events, maybe a half hour, but even that is unusual. I would definitely not support having verbal communications cut off and then have the other people who haven't had the opportunity to talk have the privilege of sitting here in our chambers until the end of our meeting so they can say something to us. So I definitely don't support this concept that is coming forward before us. I think having verbal communications and having our public have the opportunity to speak on non-agendized items is extremely important.
Any further comments? Councilmember Leonardis?
I do appreciate the work that the policy committee has completed on this, and I understand that other municipalities may be using some of these things. But I think Los Gatos is a special place. I think we have a very engaged community, and I'm grateful for that. If I had to live anywhere else, I wouldn't be sitting on the dais. So again, I look forward to all the comments. If somebody came in on one issue, or they had a couple friends and they wanted to speak, and then there's a couple other friends on another issue, they could easily use up 30 minutes, but there might be 10 different issues that night with 10 different small groups of speakers, and some of them, some of their voices may not be heard. So the only way I can live with myself in this job is hearing directly from the public. You have all the best ideas. It's not like we read these books. So I want to hear from you. Bring it, and don't change it the way we have it now.
Okay, I'm going to weigh in. I am the second member of the policy committee, and I suppose all five of us have different ways of absorbing information. I actually read what's in front of us, and I encourage, and I try to respond as quickly as I can, whether you are emailing me, calling for direct meetings, or meeting in smaller groups. There are many ways to communicate, and so one of the things I want to emphasize is that this is not curtailing the direct relationship that our constituents have with us. But again, looking at alternative means to make sure that all those who would like to speak and be in attendance have the means to do so. And yes, what has been informative is looking at what other cities are doing and what other cities are experiencing. And this is an idea that was brought forward. I can certainly hear the hesitation, but I want to emphasize that this is in no way any attempt to curtail that relationship that the council members have with their constituents.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm tending to support the idea because I think what it really does is give the mayor a little more tools to try to manage the meeting. You know, I obviously don't want to cut people off, and I think that the mayor, if he/she sees that it's going to take 45 minutes instead of 30 minutes, will use their discretion to just go ahead and finish up the speakers. If you have a large contingent of people like we had that took two hours or whatever, it took that time, it does give the mayor the tool to try to manage it so it's fair to the people, as Ms. Jensen said, showed up, for their item that was already on the agenda. If those people that had an item on the agenda now have to wait till 11:30, why can't the people that came, 20 people that came with something not on the agenda but very important to say, why can't they wait till 11:30? Why do the ones with their agenda item get second place? So I'm tending to support this idea.
Would anyone care to venture for a motion? Councilmember Leonardis?
Share some further comments than a motion. We are in the fortunate position where our meetings end at, I think, midnight. A lot of councils will go till four in the morning. So regardless of how many speakers come, we're going to listen to them all, potentially. It just depends on when you listen to them, when they're fresh in the evening or when you're asleep up here. In any event, I'm going to make a motion that we just keep it the same way it is. I appreciate the work that was done on this and the insight into it. Part of me agrees with what's been said, but in my, I don't know, seven years up here, almost, I never thought that this was a problem. It's happened a couple times where we've had consent items polled, and those consent items went into extensive discussion and extensive public feedback. And it gets down to the point where you have these checks and balances. If something's trying to go through on a consent calendar, and there's enough people in the public that want to speak about it, it should be polled and they should have a right to speak about it. And that's where I'm having difficulty with this. If someone's item gets postponed, or moved to the next meeting, or whatnot, because of that, it doesn't happen too often, but there are times when we can kind of see the pace of the meeting and say, the mayor can see the pace of the meeting and say, "Well, it doesn't, you know, we've got three more items, and it's 11:30, so, you know, maybe we should reschedule a couple of these items at the end." And that has happened before as well. So again, I'm very weary to change anything. I appreciate our engaged community and all the participation that they have, and I'd like to leave it the way it is, and that's my motion.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I have a question. Mr. Leonardis confused me a little bit. So he's mentioning items on the consent calendar. If people want to speak on the consent calendar, that's not limited to 30 minutes or have anything to do with the 30 minutes, right? They would ask to pull it, and then if 20 or 25 people wanted to speak on a consent calendar item, they would be able to. Is that true?
Correct. Mr. Andrews?
Correct. The recommended revisions are strictly within the verbal communication section as redlined in your packet.
Okay. Councilmember Leonardis?
Just a clarification for the vice mayor. So the only time I can remember there ever being an issue is when we have a couple consent items polled in one evening, and we get a lot of speakers who spoke on those consent items. And therefore, it seems like there were a lot of verbal groups or a lot of verbal comments that were organized to speak on something that evening. I wasn't speaking in terms of an organized group that just shows up during public comments. I don't recall that ever being an issue that would exceed a 30-minute timeframe, but I don't want to limit that either.
Any further comments? Actually, do we have a second to the motion? Councilmember Johnson? I am so sorry. I'm all just convobulated today, and it's not even 11:30.
I will second the motion. I agree with Mr. Leonardis. And again, I have never experienced a problem with verbal communications, either as a council member or as a mayor.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Right. So the motion does not pass, and I look to other council members for an alternate motion. Councilmember Johnson?
I'll move that we approve the proposed policy that's contained in our staff reports for the reasons that have been stated, and emphasize that it is not designed to curtail comment. It's designed to be able to manage comment. As Mr. Rennie indicated, it's a tool for the chair of the meeting to use. And because it's a policy, the beauty of it is that it can be changed if it's not working properly.
A second?
Second.
Okay. I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, this motion passes 3-2 with Councilmember Spector and Leonardis opposing. Thank you. We now move to item 14.
Thank you. Item 14 is to authorize the town manager to enter into a revenue agreement with the county of Santa Clara for an amount of $17,000 for a senior transportation pilot program. We allocated the $17,000 in our budget for 1718, and this is currently within the town manager's authority. The reason why we're bringing it forward as a council agenda item, however, is because of the unique nature of the pilot, and we wanted to give the full council an opportunity to weigh in before we committed the funds. As noted in the staff report, the county is the fiscal agent for the senior pilot. The pilot is essentially already started. They have entered into service agreements with two nonprofits to provide senior transportation, excuse me, services to the West Valley cities of Los Gatos, Montessorino, Saratoga, Cupertino, and Campbell, and they are in the process of hiring the staff to be able to fulfill the pilot. As noted in your staff report, the pilot consists of curb-to-curb transportation services, members of the community who are ambulatory over the age of 55 and meet certain other requirements would be able to call for a ride anywhere between 36 hours and five days prior to when the ride is needed, be able to schedule that, and be able to schedule their return. The fee structure is flexible based on the income of the resident. There are a lot of metrics in the service agreement with the two nonprofits available for your review. We expect to receive quarterly reports from the county regarding the progress of the pilot. And as noted in your staff report, the town has been very clear that we see this as an opportunity to prove the concept of curb-to-curb transportation services. If this is successful, then we would ask the VTA to pick up this service and not ask for additional money in the future from participating cities. The responsibility of providing transportation services rests with the Valley Transportation Authority. We are open to participating in the pilot for this one single year, and with that, staff is recommending that we do participate in the pilot and enter into the revenue agreement. And we are here to answer any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pravetti. Any questions? Vice Mayor?
It's maybe more of a statement than a question, but if Mrs. Pravetti would like, can respond if she'd like. You know, my first thought about this is reliability. If senior, you know, I know they've had trouble with some services before, where if you've got an appointment you need to get to, can you rely on the service to show up so that you can get to your appointment and not have to order it four hours in advance because you don't know when it's really going to come? So as part of the evaluation, that's something to think about.
Well, and I think that raises a really good point, because there are different service standards in terms of what, how large of a window should a senior need to be expected to wait before their ride either arrives at their home or at the destination for the return trip. So those would be metrics that we would be looking at as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do understand that there are issues we will have to address and monitor as this project goes forward. However, I also know from studies that have been done, input that we have received from the seniors of our community, that transportation is extremely important. So I am glad we are going forward with this, understanding that we do have to see how it works, just like you do with Uber and Lyft, but I am glad for it. And there was one sentence in the staff report that says, basically, staff says, "We're in no position to carry on funding for a future program." And the question there would be is, we don't know what funding we will have in the future or in what amount. And so I was curious as to why that statement was so defined.
Well, I think we were fortunate for 1718 in that we had a little bit of surplus within our budget. So when the county asked us to participate and pay our share based on senior population, we recognized that we would be able to afford it. As time moves forward, you know, I guess I don't want to tie the hands of future councils or yourselves with respect to an ongoing obligation on a service that is typically not provided by municipalities. And just looking at our forecast, you know, while our budget is looking healthy, we know that there may be a recession in the near future. So again, I'd rather be cautious than overly optimistic in setting an expectation that this is a long-term prospect for Los Gatos.
Further questions? Would anyone in the public like to weigh in on this matter? It is a public hearing. Okay, seeing none, look to the council for, yes, Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the town manager to enter into a revenue agreement with the county of Santa Clara in the amount of $17,000 for a senior transportation pilot program.
Okay. Would anyone like to second? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and second. And I also want to make a comment. I'm okay with this, but I'm a little bit leery of our position that after this, VTA has to take it over. And I'm mostly leery because VTA has a lot of high costs. If this gets stuck into their high costs, it may just kill the program. And being an alternate to the VATA board, I can say- And being an alternate to the VATA board, I can say, tell you their budget is in trouble. It's in real trouble. So it's not something they're easily going to pick up. I think that they are going to want to try to create some model where there's cooperations with the town so that they can stay out of their high-cost way of doing business. So I would hope we could stay more flexible with it.
Any further comments?
Just want to weigh in, just to reemphasize that this is a pilot project. And when we entered into this, the cost sharing is between VTA, the county supervisors, as well as the five West Valley cities. And the purpose is to identify, is there a demand? Is there a need? We've, several studies have shown that there is, and so let's look at the reality of, will this actually be a successful model? What we don't want, and what we've been trying to figure out is, how do we define success at the end of a year? And financially, is this something worth for our town to participate in? The next steps for this is to, for the services to begin this launch, we've asked them to connect with all our service providers in town, as well as our Community and Senior Services Commission. And our goal is, and it's probably a good problem to have, if it's very successful and we find that this is a need, and this is a service that many of our seniors in our community are actually using. But what I'm hopeful is that at the end of a pilot project, we'll actually have some information to make useful decisions about how to move forward without necessarily tying our hands financially or organizationally. Okay? With that, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. We now move to item 15, which is our weed abatement assessment.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Lisa Peterson, Town Engineer. I'm here tonight to request that the council consider the 2017 Weed Abatement Program Assessment Report from the County of Santa Clara Consumer Environmental Protection Agency, and adopt a resolution confirming the report and authorizing collection of the assessment charges. So the town's annual weed abatement program is something that has been in place for many years. It's been put in place in order to help us prevent fires. It is run by the County Weed Abatement Program, and they do go out and assess risk properties. And if they assess a property and they believe that the weeds need to be removed on that property, they do contact the property owner. Property owner has a period of time to remove those weeds themselves. If they do not remove the weeds, then the county's contractor comes out and removes the weeds, and they are assessed on the tax roll. And the reason we have this public hearing is in order to allow any property owners that are on that assessment to come up and express any concern they may have with the council regarding the assessment. And we do have a representative from the county here with us tonight. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I look to council for a motion. Councilmember Johnson?
I move that we accept the report from the County of Santa Clara and adopt a resolution, which is attachment two, confirming that report and authorizing collection of the charges.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. We now move to item 16, which is the North 40 Phase 1 application, Architecture Site Application S-13-090, Vesting Tentative Map Application M-13-014. Just a reminder that this is a continuation from our last hearing that was on Monday. Public testimony has been closed. But before we begin into any discussion, I'd like staff to provide an additional report since last week.
It's just very short. Since last week, we prepared another staff report and addendum and desk items answering any questions that were received from council and any other major issues that came up. And we're here to answer any other questions and to assist in your deliberations.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Councilmembers, before we begin, since last week, are there any disclosures that you need to disclose? Councilmember Leonardis?
Nothing to disclose.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Councilmember Specter?
Nothing.
And Vice Mayor?
Nothing.
I do want to disclose that I did have a conversation with the applicant, clarification on some of the things that I've submitted in addition to the staff report. Okay. Any questions of staff? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a bit of a long-winded question, but it kind of, you know, I think you need to hear my thought process to get to the question. So we've had a lot of people suggest that there's health and safety issues because of it being close to the highway. And, you know, we've had a couple of reports and letters, and I've read through them, and, you know, we even had a couple of references to a New England Journal of Medicine report that, you know, I guess the person that referenced it tried to tie it to highways, but it actually only talks about different levels. I think what it really does is, it talks about what is the level of particulates and ozone that is a problem? And it concludes that our, I guess, our standard that we normally work to is probably too high. And then there's some other reports that talk about distances from the highway, 300 feet, 500 feet, 1,000 feet, I think you even saw 1,500 feet. So, you know, as a denial item, I think we need to find an objective standard in there. And I guess I don't think I'm finding objective standards in reports or articles. When I think through it, what I would say, you know, it's hard to make an objective standard for how far houses should be from the highway, because the highways are different. If I'm sitting next to a highway coming out of the Port of Long Beach with trucks belching diesel, long lines of trucks belching diesel, closer to that highway is probably going to be worse than closer to a highway in Los Gatos where it's partially full of Teslas coming home. So I can see it being difficult. So what I would do instead is say, let's do measurements, and then decide based on measurements what the distance from the highway at any particular point should be. So my question is, I believe the EIR has done measurements. Were measurements done, and do they follow certain standards?
So I'll start, and if Mr. Schultz has anything additional. Yes, air quality was studied. There were mitigation measures required for those studies. To get to some of your reasoning, if the town determined for some reason that in the future, we wanted to set our own objective measure for air quality, for instance, then the town would have to take scientific evidence, other evidence into consideration. But we could add in our general plan, in our zoning code, or any other specific plan, a specific measurable, objective standard for air quality, for instance. And if we had that in place, then that's something that could have been relied on. In this case, we don't have that. And so those standards, I believe, as was stated in the staff report for this evening's meeting, can't be taken into consideration for that specific topic.
Okay. Thank you.
The actual standards, so that's correct. Under CEQA, we list out in every single chapter, you'll see what the standards are and what they had to follow. So for the air, it was under the Bay Area, Bay Area Air Quality Management Districts and the CEQA Air Quality Guidelines. So developer or anyone that comes in knows exactly what they're going to have to follow. In this case, they followed those guidelines. The testimony you've heard is, let's change those standards, let's change those guidelines and required maybe different type of particulate matters or at a different location. And that might be something that we want to look into for future projects. But for this project, it had to be in place at the time of the completion, the application was deemed complete. And at that point in time, that standard has been followed, and the court has said, we've got to apply the objective standards and can't now make up new objective standards that they want them to follow. Or, for example, even if we were able to do different studies, we have no objective standard that says, you know, that all residential homes have to be 500 feet or 1,000 feet, like you were saying. I mean, we need to, if we want to change that standard, we've got to go through studies ourselves to determine what locations and where we would want further setbacks. Do our own CEQA on actually changing our CEQA guidelines and standards. We'd have to do our own CEQA on top of that to determine that those new baselines we're using are adequate and fair. So that's why we can't just now, in the middle of the game, change studies.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Along the same line, if staff could remind me, right now, under the conditions of the application, how far is the, what is the closest the building could be to the 17 freeway? And what, if any, conditions are imposed upon those buildings?
So I'll try to pull out the specific provision, but currently, given the new air standards that have been adopted, there's no restriction for building setback, but for outdoor areas, they have to be 50 feet from Highway 17. And I'll double-check that, and if I need clarification, I'll let you know. And it looks like Ms. Prevetti might have it handy.
I don't have the actual figure, but I do want to acknowledge that today, you received correspondence from the applicant's attorney acknowledging acceptance of a potential modification to Condition 161, that acknowledged the possibility of future studies, including air quality studies. So that is a potential modification to a condition that you can consider this evening, since the applicant has voluntarily offered to provide that.
Okay. Councilmember Specter?
And then following up, basically getting back to the second part of my question, which was not only how far, you're saying that it's, what, 50 feet for the yard?
Correct.
And what if any conditions relating to the homes that are along that freeway? I think, are there none?
Well, there's a specific condition relating to air quality that deals with the MERV rating for air filters, and that, I believe, is 13 or more, which is one of the conditions from the, or one of the mitigation measures, sorry, from the EIR.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Two basic questions, I think, that are sort of follow-ups. Just to put in place a basic tenet, the Housing Accountability Act requires us to determine whether or not the project complies with applicable objective general plan and zoning criteria, i.e. the specific plan, that were in effect at the time the application was determined to be complete. So we are just looking at things that are in effect as of that date, which I understand is May 4, 2016. Is that right?
That is correct.
So anything that we consider after May 4th, or, we cannot come up with, as you said, Mr. Schultz, new criteria, we are working with the laws and ordinances and policies that are in effect as of that date. Correct? Then a follow-up, I'm sorry, one follow-up to what Ms. Prevetti, in answering Ms. Specter's question, indicated that there was, we have had a number of proposed conditions of approval. So I wanted to state what my understanding is, see what Ms. Prevetti says, because of your comment regarding we could change something based upon the agreement of the developer. It's my understanding, and I even actually have found it somewhere, well, number one, this is not an application for a conditional use permit. This is an application for development under a zoning scheme, so we are not looking at it as we would a restaurant, or do I need to have food with my wine, or whatever. It's not a conditional use permit that I'm just attaching conditions on as I wish. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So then the second portion of that is that essentially what the specific plan acts as the conditions of approval. That if an application complies with what's in the specific plan, it should be approved, particularly with the buy right. So in fact, when I look at the specific plan, Section 2.4.1 has a section, quote, "Permitted and conditionally permitted uses." And then we have a table, that those of you that enjoyed the North 40 Advisory Committee meetings know, that we spent many, 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 many hours going through what would be, require a CUP and what would not. And that's contained in our table. And one of the reasons that we don't have cottage cluster housing is that it requires a CUP. So just to get in perspective, to make sure I understand, that a condition, that we cannot just simply impose a condition unless a law has changed, or we have a nexus that requires us to do that, to some effect, or the applicant says, "Okay." But we cannot impose a condition, a conditional, a condition on this application absent essentially consent. Is that correct?
That's correct. So you would need to either have a town code, the specific plan, a state law, which, that's why we have over 150 conditions, because there are a lot of governing rules that are built into this. If there are additional items that the applicant has voluntarily agreed to, those can also be added to the conditions. But that's a fairly narrow scope, as identified in the letter you received today.
Okay. One just final clarification. So if I were someone on the council hypothetically who wanted a particular condition, just make up whatever it might be, and the applicant said, "No, I do not care to do that," Mr. Schultz, could I now legally find some kind of objective noncompliance because the applicant chose not to accept my condition? So I, if they say no to my desire, have I now, given the legal position of our case, of our application, can that be a basis for me finding noncompliance?
The court could. So in other words, what you're saying is, if we attach a condition that is not based on the objective standards, which is not only our specific plan or general plan or zoning code, but Public Works has many standards, our BNP program is not really a zoning code, but there's all sorts of standards that we do have and the state has. But if we were to attach a condition that was not based on any objective criteria, then the applicant, and did not agree, the applicant could go back into court and have that set aside.
Okay. So under the posture we are now, if the applicant chooses not to accept a condition that somebody wishes to impose, that would not be following the court order? We have, we go to litigation and we do it again?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to follow up on this specific item. So I heard two different things from staff. I heard about moving forward, there are possibilities for us to look at amending our general plan criteria for air quality. Let's take that as an example. Now, right now, in our, in the current application with this EIR, I believe, for the residential adjacent to the freeway, the EIR mitigation measures that are MERV 13. And is that correct? Correct. And so that, by all scientific, Bay Area Air Quality Management District regulations meets their human health criteria. What happens, and I believe that those windows also have to, they can't open, the ones that are facing the freeway, there are certain mitigation measures. How are those enforceable five years from now, two years from now, so that those air filters remain in place and those windows remain shut?
Well, I'm still waiting for the EIR mitigation measures to download, which is taking some time.
Okay.
But generally, that's something that, you know, the town or an applicant, these homes are going to be sold. That's not something that we go out and check. If someone filed a complaint, then we would go out and inspect that and check that out. But ultimately, it's the homeowner's responsibility to decide, and frankly, make a choice. Because I don't recall the inoperable. There are some circumstances where they say the windows have to be inoperable. I don't believe that's the case here. And the basis for requiring the MERV rating of 13 or higher is so that you can keep your windows closed and still have clean air inside. And so we'll go through those, but that's not something the town would typically monitor on an ongoing basis. We would make sure that they are installed once the construction's complete pursuant to all the mitigation measures. And then going forward, it'd be the ultimate homeowner's responsibility.
And are those, okay, understanding that part, that our part is to make sure that as it's built, those are there, do you, are you aware, are those part of HOA conditions? What I'm concerned about is how do we ensure that those people that are living in those homes have the air quality that they, that they think they have, and that the air filtration is actually working to their benefit? Like, are you aware of HOA requirements, making sure that those filters are checked?
Well, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be HOA, they'd be individual homeowners. So the HOA only monitors the common So the HOA only monitors the common space. The individual homeowner would have to monitor their own filter, they'd have access to their own filter, and they could change it as frequently as they like. There may be, and I frankly don't know, some disclosure requirements from a real estate transaction perspective that would get incorporated, and then I'm not sure what other requirements from the CCNRs there are as it relates to that, and I'm not sure if Mr. Schultz has any additional input on that.
The CCNRs will be reviewed by my office at some point in time, but we're not even at that, at that stage yet. Certainly during that process, if that's a concern to council, I can, I can look at ways and mechanisms that are in the CCNRs and what's disclosed about the freeways, or about the requirements of the original development. But as Joel said, there's, there's no ability for the town to continually monitor whether a homeowner, or even force a homeowner to do it. And certainly, the original developer is not held responsible once the homes are sold and it's all new ownership.
Okay.
But there might be some, there might be language, and like Joel said, there might be some real estate disclosures under state law that I'm not even aware of that might need to be made because of the freeways.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is probably a question for Mr. Schultz, but whoever can answer it. I'm a little confused. What I'm looking at is the, the judges granting the writ of mandamus, and in that, he quotes from the Housing Accountability Act 655-89.5J, and that ordinance, that law, does state that you need objective criteria to disapprove an application, or to lower the density of an application. But I see nothing in that law that references conditions that would not necessarily disapprove or lower the density.
So your question is, is if you could attach a condition based on a subjective requirement, but it would not in any way change their density requirements, then you'd like to be able to put that type of condition in the project? And it just depends on what that condition is, really, that you're, what you're talking about.
Yes, I would not.
Whether we can require a nexus, then you're even looking at another requirement of substantial evidence. But certainly, if the criteria reduces the density or denies the project, then no, it couldn't be. But if it's a requirement to do something based on substantial evidence of another factor, and it might not be based on objective criteria, it might very well be able to stand up in court.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mayor. So questions about traffic, we've received lots of suggestions that traffic changes could be a health and safety issue perhaps. There's, there's been some suggestions that beach traffic could cause a health and safety issue. I, I myself have done some dumb moves, like drove to the Lark Avenue car wash on a Saturday morning and not been able to get back home to Almond Grove, and I definitely know how bad traffic is, but it doesn't seem to get the, to, to the North Forty area, which is, you know, probably three or four miles from where it backs up.
Okay, please, everyone, let's, I want to be able to hear all the council members, so let's refrain from comments, please.
So my, my question is, and I, I see Director Morley's not here, perhaps the town engineer had some input, you know, so we've been monitoring during beach traffic, do we, you know, have you, is there any evidence of beach traffic really affecting the North Forty area?
Thank you, Lisa Peterson, Town Engineer. Though the environmental impact report has been approved and certified by council, and when the environmental impact report is, is reviewed, it does have a traffic impact analysis that goes along with that. That traffic impact analysis is analyzing impact of that particular project's traffic on the town. So it does not, and the environmental impact report does not require the project to mitigate for regional traffic. And I guess it's something that maybe I would also throw over to our, our town attorney as well.
I think that was a good segment to start, is, is to realize that CEQA requires you to analyze the impacts of the project, and it, and it's required to mitigate those impacts to less than significant, so not even back to where it was beforehand, just to less than significant. And it mitigates its impacts, not the impacts that you're having from beach traffic. And more importantly than that is, is that, as she mentioned, is, is we had an EIR, we certified that EIR, and, and it followed, that EIR followed, again, we go back to what our standards are, and our standards are set forth with the VTA and tell them when to do their studies. And their studies is done during the peak times, during morning traffic, and after, and at night traffic on, when work's coming home, and then during the days. It, it doesn't say you have to do studies on, on the weekends. Again, it's like your quality. If that's an issue council wants to study, is, is that, that weekends should be placed into it to establish that baseline. The council could, but you can't change it now and state that you want weekend studies for this project. And again, I would, I would say that needs to be completely vetted, because doing a weekend traffic analysis in July is going to be completely different than a weekend traffic analysis in just a couple of months. And so you couldn't, it would be very difficult to come up with a standard that says the applicant has to do a study on, when the, when there's three accidents on the 17 and there's complete chaos on Los Gatos Boulevard. That's not going to be a standard that's going to hold up in court. I know of no towns and cities right now that do traffic analysis in their CEQA based on weekends, because it usually is much, much lower. And again, we would be talking, the summer months is, is if you take both Saturday and Sunday for the summer months, it's, it's 30 days, you know, out of the 52 weeks, out of the 365 days. So it's difficult to try to base a baseline on that. That doesn't mean we can't do it and look into that, because it's a major concern, as you've heard, and what will be taken up in a month. But it's not something that you can now apply to this project, because it's not a standard that we currently have in place.
Councilmember Johnson?
I wanted to follow up on Ms. Spector's question, because I think the answer, Mr. Schultz, that you gave, it confused me. I'm not sure. So I, if I look at the judge's ruling, and I look at the quote from the Housing Accountability Act, there are, essentially, there's three steps. The first step is that the project complies with applicable objective general plan and zoning standards in place at the time. Okay, that's number one. So if this council were to find objective compliance, then conditions are discretionary with the applicant, correct? Because if, because the only way I'm going to get to a condition, which Ms. Spector was talking about, well, what if we decide we want a condition? Is if there's substantial evidence in the record that there's a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety, that is defined as significant quantifiable direct and unavoidable impact based on objective identified written public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions as they existed on the date the application was deemed complete, i.e., May 4, May 4, 2016. So the only time I'm going to get to a condition, if, the way I read this, is if I find a specific adverse impact. And that only comes if I find it objectively in compliance with the specific plan. Am I reading, is my interpretation of that, agree with yours?
If you find it in, in, in-
In compliance, and I want to deny it.
If you, if you find in compliance with all your objective standards, but you still wanted to deny it, you have to make that findings under the health and safety.
And that's where I get a condition. But I don't get them in paragraph one, because the judge goes on to say in page three of the decision, "Under the HAA and Housing Element Law, discretionary determinations of subjective factors in the general plan or specific plan cannot be the basis for disapproval of project."
Right. And I don't think she-
So that's a condition, correct?
And hers was disapproval of the project. Findings, disapproval. If it's a condition of approval, that is not-
And it's still up to the applicant.
That is not denying the project and doesn't deny him the ability to do his units, he's going to have to go in and say, that's not feasible. They have basically, in effect, denied my application. So I was looking at the example of the bollards that came up in a certain place. That certainly is not going to deny them the ability to do this project. We have standards, whether they're objective standards, that say exactly where to place bollards, but we've, if we find from our Public Works, that that would be a, a addition to this project that would provide protection to the pedestrians, we certainly could put that in and make the argument that I think Councilmember Spector was saying, is, is that we have the ability to place other conditions on any project for health and safety reasons.
Okay. So here's my question, then. The, I think we're dancing around each other. Let's imagine that happens, and the council makes a motion to approve. The applicant says, I don't, I choose not to have that condition. You cannot force me to have that condition. Yet, we make a resolution that requires that. We end up in litigation, correct? Because we have imposed something that we are not legally able to impose, and they've rejected, oops, they've rejected it, right?
It's very tough in the abstract to answer that question as to what that condition is. If it's a condition that is in fact going to reduce the density, or it'd be a de facto denial of the project, then yes, we will be in litigation. If it's a requirement that is not going to change their project in any way, I would be surprised, would be, be in, back in litigation over that. So really not knowing what that condition is, and raising the risks of exactly what objective criteria. But for, for denial, yes, it has to be based on objective standards.
Mr. Schultz, what may be helpful for those of us who are not in the legal profession? Could you explain, without presuming either an approval or denial, what happens once a decision is made? We, we know that we have to make a decision, it's going to a court. Can you just walk me through? Do you share a resolu-
So what's-
What exactly happens?
I actually, the town will write up what's called a return of the writ, where we write up to the judge exactly what transpired and how we complied with the court order. And so that's the first thing that's done.
And so this, so that this is in addition to the actual resolution that would be passed?
Yes. I would attach those as all attachments, explaining exactly what the process was that we went through, that we rescheduled the hearings, we rescinded the previous according to it, and we did X, Y, and Z in compliance with that. If it was a denial, here is our denial, here is why we believe we're in compliance with your, with your order. If it's approval, we've now approved the project.
And that is submitted to the courts?
Exactly.
And that is submitted, and then is there, are you then-
If, if the, if the applicant decides that he's not in agreement with the return of the writ, then there would be additional hearings be scheduled as to whether the writ was followed, or whether there's additional orders that have to be made to comply with the order.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, further questions? Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to ask staff a question from page 211 of the specific plan, and it was raised by Mr. Eichinger in the communications that we've had over the past week. And this has to do with the amount, or the percentage of low or very low income housing that the specific plan speaks to. Now, it has other words in it, so that's why I'm directing you to it. It says, "The maximum height is 45 feet for hotel and/or a mixed-use and/or mixed-income development, including a minimum of 40% extremely low, very low, or low-income affordable housing units." So included in that is, for a mixed-use or mixed-income development, there must be 40% low or extremely low or low-income affordable housing units. I believe Mr. Eichinger was using that as a, a objective standard for requiring more low-income housing than the project currently has. What are your thoughts on it?
So again, I'll jump in. I believe there was information provided, again, in the staff report regarding state density bonus law. So through the state density bonus law, the applicant can request waivers to anything that would preclude them from developing the housing at the density that they're looking at, or that they have proposed. And so elsewhere in the specific plan, there is language regarding the minimum affordable requirement of 20%, which they exceed. Through the state density bonus law, to be, to be able to request those waivers, they only need to meet a minimum 11% threshold, because they're in the extremely low and very low category that they're proposing. So this specific provision actually is not something that could be used to deny the project.
Well, I'm going to put aside denial, conditioning, approval. I guess I listened to you, and I didn't understand why this provision wouldn't apply to the application.
This provision, given the state density bonus law, allows them to request a waiver for any restriction. So they don't have to hit this 40% threshold, they're only required to hit an 11% threshold, because they've requested a density bonus pursuant to state density bonus law. And if Mr. Schultz or Ms. Pravetti have any additional clarification?
Another way to think of it is that state law trumps our specific plan. So it's a higher order of law, and since the applicant requested a state density bonus and a waiver, then that, those are the rules that we're playing under.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Actually, I do have a question on the, on the state density, on the state laws and what they trump. So basically, the density bonus and all these various waivers that are being requested, even if we had written, what I'm hearing is that through those mechanisms, because affordable housing is being provided, it, the burden is on us to show why we, we would want, or why we would be denying any of those requested waivers?
That's correct. In effect, it's this, it's very similar, health and safety, significant adverse impacts that you'd have to find, and, and that's the same threshold for the Housing Accountability Act.
Any further questions? Okay. Seeing no questions, would anyone like to share comments? Vice Mayor?
I'm, I'm going to go ahead and share some comments that are, some things that were bothering me. One of, you know, I read everything that is sent to us and think about everything that's said, and one of the, some of the comments that have been bothering me were ones we received, fortunately not as many the last couple of weeks, but certainly before the last meeting, about the senior housing component. And more than once, I've been up at 3:00 in the morning, kind of stressing over them. And for me, the best way to, to kind of go back to sleep is I sit down and I write down all my thoughts. So I figured I would share some of these thoughts that I had at, at 3:00 in the morning. You know, we've, we've received letters and, and heard public comment that allowing senior housing to be built will be a burden to Los Gatos, and that really bothers me. I'd, I'd like to point out that what is proposed is not, is affordable senior housing not a convalescent home. Many, if not most, of the seniors living there will be able to walk to Trader Joe's. It's been intimated that because a senior is low income, they're feeble. This is erroneous. There are many people that have lived in Los Gatos a long time, or even all their life, and are part of our community. They, they are part of what makes Los Gatos, Los Gatos, yet they may not be rich, or in some cases, they may not be well off at all. Los Gatos is, is becoming more and more expensive, forcing out valuable community members. I know a senior who lived in Los Gatos a long time. Her son even went to Los Gatos High. She has volunteered at Numu for years, and in the past, also volunteered, and I can't remember which, or maybe it was all of them, at the, the cancer store, the butter paddle, the Happy Dragon, or maybe it was, was all of them, as I said. When I met her and her husband, they lived on Harding in kind of a raggedy house that did not rent for too much. When her landlord raised the rent too much, she found a beat-up small house on University north of Nine. After living for years, her landlord sold to someone who would bulldoze and build a new house. She moved a short distance into San Jose, but continued her living and volunteering in Los Gatos. The cost of living has now pushed her out a- The cost of living has now pushed her out again and she's moved to Stockton. I feel a great sense of loss to our community because she's forced to move away. She's approximately 70, still vibrant, and as I said, can walk to, walk from the North Forty to Trader Joe's. She does have a car and it runs most of the time. I think this is the perfect kind of candidate for Eden Housing. This is the people our community, and I'm, I'm told are going to, these are the people in our community that I'm told are going to be a burden on Los Gatos. For me to say, seniors are a burden to Los Gatos and we cannot afford them is wrong. In Los Gatos, I want to be part, in the Los Gatos I want to be part of, seniors will always be welcome, supported, appreciated for their accomplishments and contributions during their life. I will always be supportive of some, I'll always be supportive of using some of Los Gatos's resources to take care of seniors and will always reject the ideas that seniors are a burden on Los Gatos.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any further comments? Councilmember Spector?
Thank you. This is not a motion, but the issue has been raised by many community members about a moratorium and on the, going forward, a moratorium on the use of the specific plan other than for this application here. I have touched base with Mr. Schultz on this, and he said that either the mayor could agendize it or two members of the council, and that we could agendize it for August 15th. I'm assuming that's our next council meeting. And so I'm going to be one of those council members that ask the town to agendize a moratorium on more specific plan projects until we revisit the specific plan.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll, I'll make a couple of comments to that effect, and I want to make sure I compartmentalize the various applications and phases that we have. Thank you for that. As of, as of recently, we have an emergency moratorium on the August 15 agenda. What I need to make clear, though, is that is for moving forward with future phases. We, that's on August 15. Today is August 1st. We need to focus on the application that's before us. But what I want to emphasize is that, as we've said for many times, the North Forty specific plan is 40 acres. And what's before us is an application on the 20. And our constituents, as well as the council members, have learned a significant amount of, of laws and information and how we best use that moving forward, I think is something that we can utilize. But I want to make sure that we focus on the application that's before us today. Any further comments? Councilmember Johnson?
Okay. I'm just going to jump in and make motion to get us started. Actually, I'd like to bifurcate it into two, if I might. One is with respect to Attachment 10, which is the motion to rescind the previous resolution. I would move to do, to do that before we go forward and that, the basis for that motion is we've been ordered by a court to do it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And so I just want to clarify that this is just--
Simply to rescind and adopt the resolution that's contained in Attachment 10.
Okay. I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. It passes 4-1 with Councilmember Leonardis in dissent.
Okay. And the second motion is going to be long, so I hope people are going to be taking notes. We are in a different posture than we normally find ourselves when we come to a planning commission or consider meeting or consider a regular development in town where we consider an applicant, appellant, neighbors. What we're doing tonight is responding to a court order to have a hearing to reconsider the action that we took last year. And we have specific parameters that have been set out in our staff report and have been set out by the court as to exactly what we get to consider, how we get to consider it, and how we get to move forward. So this is not a normal posture of considering a land use application in Los Gatos. We are taking action pursuant to a court judgment, and we need to do that based upon the legal rulings and the court judgment that we have. So hence my questions about CUPs. This isn't a CUP. It's an application and we are responding to a court order. So my motion would be to approve the application and adopt the resolution that's contained in Attachment 12. In order for me to adopt that resolution or the council to adopt it, we need to find that there are specific, that essentially that the application complies with the specific plan objectively. I would cite to the entire record in support of that. I would cite to, in particular, the transcript of September 1st, 2016, pages 31 to 33 and pages 85 to 90, and also set out some particular items where it does comply. The first being the Section 1.4 of the specific plan called Relationship to Other Planning Documents, which says, "The specific plan is consistent with and furthers the objectives of the general plan." So we actually, in the specific plan itself, say that it's consistent with the general plan. Section 1.5.1 of the specific plan says, "The North Forty specific plan is also a regulatory document. The requirements of this, this specific plan supplement and in some cases supersede the zoning ordinance within the plan boundary." So again, we're looking to this specific plan to determine what the objective criteria are and whether or not it complies. Given those citations, and I'll go specifically to some that were set out by both the applicant and were also mentioned on September 1st. First, open space, Section 2.5.4, 30% is required, 39% has been provided. 2.5.4D, publicly accessible open space, 20% minimum of the 30% is required, 85% has been supplied. A two-story minimum in the, 15% of residences in Lark District buildings have to be two-story. That's at 2.5.2A2. 29% have been supplied in the application. New commercial is maxed out at 66,000 square feet per table, 2.2. Well, actually, it's, it's maxed out at 435,000. The application has 66,000, so it complies with Table 2.2. It complies with the residential setback required in 2.5.9 and Table 2.6 of our specific plan on Lark Avenue. The height on Lark at 25 maximum is complied with at Section 2.5.2A2. Residential parking, 579 is required, 581 is, is supplied at 2.5.8 and Table 2.4. Mixed-use parking and commercial use parking has also been supplied as required, in some cases more than supplied, again at 2.5.8. There are other aspects that were cited on, in September that the project complied with bicycle planning at Section, specific plan 4.1C5. It does. And it includes all mitigation measures that are required in the EIR, including the air quality. And I looked it up on my EIR, and that's at AQ5 and AQ6 for the air quality. With respect to the traffic, we have those things in place as of, I hope you'll remind me of the date, but the council did certify the EIR last year with additional traffic studies. And so we are limited to what was in place at that time and that those EIR traffic studies have been completed. And that is what we need to consider when we look at this. So I'm trying to do this very matter-of-factly. I will go on and talk about some conditions of approval that were included by or proposed by the mayor at Attachment 18, and then were responded to by the applicant indicating whether or not they accepted them, which is somewhere. Excuse me, I made an entire chart. So my preface, my preface to this is that I don't believe the council is in the position of asking for conditions of approval for the reasons that the specific plan does set out the conditions of approval. This is not a CUP. And unless we have a particular nexus or determine that there's a specific adverse impact to health or safety, I don't think we can do that. So I'm going to get to my chart, just somewhere. Bear with me. I made an entire color-coded chart, but I'm just going to go through it. Oh, there it is, yay. All right, Attachment 18. It was suggested that, well, I'm not going to start with the non-controversial. Condition 3, it was suggested that there be no fencing around publicly accessible open space. I would include that in my motion. Number 10, no additional bedrooms beyond those that are called out, and the applicant indicated that they wished that it would be optional bedroom and regular bedroom as indicated in the plan. Their, Condition 58 was to encourage employees to use shuttles and alternative parking. I would include that. Condition 87, ask for Class 2 bike lanes. The applicant in his letter today indicated agreement with that with some modifications to the language. I would include that. So I'm including Mr. Faber's letter. 103, Condition 103 also went to no fencing for publicly accessible open space. 107 and 108 were grammatical corrections that, and these were agreed to by the developer. 115 was a, basically a transportation demand management plan for both residential and commercial. I would include that. 138 landscape approval, I would include that. 148 was drainage, I would include that. 149 and 153 were grammatical, I would include those. 158 was opt-in email notice, I would include that. 161 was an agreement for future studies, whatever they might be, including air quality to be funded by the applicant. I would include that. And then I'm going to go back to the ones I did not mention that were noted and I know that some council people care about. One was that we offer trees that are removed to the public. I'd include that. It's fine. I don't think that there's a nexus. However, the applicant has agreed to it as long as there's a plan in place, so it's not chaotic. So if there's a plan in place, I would include that. What were the other ones? There were two that were suggested that I would not include, and I'll give my pitch why. The first is 104, that the sound wall be referred, be reviewed by the Arts and Culture Commission. I am not including that, even though the applicant indicated that it was okay. I think that we've put everything in place over many years of discussion as to how this should be done, and with the landscape approval and requirements for air quality, et cetera, we don't want to mix apples and oranges in my mind with having an arts commission look at what's going to be a practical, sound, and air quality barrier. The other thing that I'm, I'm going to make pitch for now. Condition number two, and this is a really good example of the difference in my mind between subjective and objective. Condition number two asks to change the architecture to Attachment 13. The applicant is okay with that. So subjectively, I don't care for that new architecture. I like the fact that this was proposing something modern and different and innovative. We got something from Planning Commissioner Hudes that indicated that the objective reason to reject this plan was that the architecture looked like generic cookie cutters that could be anywhere. And so with all due respect to that opinion, I would say that the proposal for the changed architecture looks like a generic cookie cutter that we could see anywhere. And that this is our opportunity to do something new, different, innovative, and so that we don't have everything be Mediterranean or a craftsman. There was a time when I was on the planning commission where you could not build a Spanish style house because no one wanted stucco. Then we got everything craftsman, including Artisan Wine Depot. So I think that there's a point where you say to yourself that we can allow for innovation, we can allow for something that looks a little bit different, and we can try it out. Let the market decide. Subjectively, somebody may hate it, but it's not an objective opinion. You may hate my dress, you may hate what I'm saying, that's your opinion, but it's not a fact. So a measurable fact, objective is a measurable fact. And with respect to the architecture, and I'll listen on this one, we had testimony from the, I think his name was Paul Thatch, at one of the hearings as to why the architecture that was selected matched the agricultural history of the site, because it had battened board siding, it had metal things that looked like barn. And we're not, we don't get that with the change. So that's my speech about the architecture, but I, I could be persuaded. But as I say, it's completely subjective. It's also included in the vesting tentative map, two suggested by the mayor. And with respect to the other suggestions with, on the vesting tentative map, number seven, the mayor had suggested a monthly tree report. The applicant indicates quarterly. I think quarterly makes sense. Tree health is hard to measure from month to month, especially if it's a deciduous tree or it's a drought or it's raining or it's not. One is, the second one is vesting tentative map 22F. Again, it's no fencing of publicly accessible open space. I would include that. So I believe that that's what I would include with my motion, and hopefully, Ms. Peretti, you have that down. And Mr. Schultz, if I've missed some legal obligation, I'd appreciate if you would let me know.
The only thing I would offer is I didn't hear any comments on--
Oh, this--
Condition seven.
Conditions seven. The BMP was the occupation of the BMP before anything else. That's, I'm not including that because I don't think that that was something that was in place at the time, and I'm not sure that we have a nexus to require that and that the applicant is not agreeing to it. So I would not want to put us in the position of jeopardizing or put us in the position of additional litigation to insist on that. I would keep it the way we had it, is why I'm not including that. There was something else. Oh, the judge's decision, just so I make sure I get it in. He did find that the previous findings in the resolution just rescinded, which were 1AC and 1E with respect to the vesting tentative map while subjective, were supported by substantial evidence. And also, he did conclude, albeit a footnote, that though the town did not make findings that the application objectively complied, there was a footnote that indicated, he found that there was substantial evidence that they, it in fact did comply had the town made such a finding. So I'd include that as part of my support as well. And that's my motion.
Oh, I'll just real quick--
Mr. Schultz?
Because earlier we had the more of the esoteric situation between Councilmember Spector and yourself about the conditions of approval and the objective criteria for, if you're going to deny or reduce the density. And Condition 2 is a very good example of that. It certainly isn't based on an objective standard, but you, it is allowed under the by right and the housing element and even under the Housing Accountability Act for you to make architectural design changes if in fact it doesn't effectively, de facto, for example, if your condition was actually going to make, have to make the homes out of gold bricks-- of gold bricks, then that would be a de facto denial. But a change of this nature, if it's agreeable by majority of the council, that is not a situation where the, in my belief, that they'd be able to argue that you have not complied with the Housing Accountability Act because number one, you haven't denied it, number two, you haven't reduced the density, and the changes don't make it infeasible to do.
Thank you for that clarification. I was trying to include in the conditions ones that the applicant had agreed to in some form, or that I thought that we could make an argument for. The, the fact that I didn't include number two, as I said, was completely subjective on my part, that I actually prefer the original architecture. But I'm willing to consider questions, indications, or additions, whatever, if there's a second to the motion.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I would like to ask for a couple changes, additions, whatever you want to call them, before I would, would second. And so let's, let's start with number two, condition number two we just talked about. And I'm, I'm purposely, perfectly happy to let all of the architecture stuff go. I've, you know, originally, a year ago, was trying to find ways that I thought to make this blend into Los Gatos better. And over the course of a year, I've heard no support at all for my ideas. Thank you to the applicant for making a drawing of them, but, you know, I'm not going to force something where I don't feel any, any support. This is supposed to be for the community, not for me. So I would request that you do include number two, but have E and G only, which are the thing I think most important. E is a modification to the interior plans that the applicant agreed to for the garden clusters, so that you will have first floor only flats. There would be 10 of those that would be, the idea would be they would be senior friendly, so we would end up with 10 market rate, senior friendly, first floor only kind of flats. And the other one was trying to preserve, currently, if you go out to the North Forty, you can look west towards Saratoga and still see views of the hills. So that, the other one was, the applicant had volunteered to plant buckhorn or some other tree instead of the 65-foot trees that would block it out. So the idea would be at the end of the streets that run west, you'd have a shorter tree that would hopefully allow you to still have views of the hills. So I would request those two items. And then the other one, I'm not as married to, but on the Class 2 bike lanes, it struck me to say they must have Class 2, might be limiting. I realize they have a plan and they'll go do it, but I would maybe change the wording to Class 2 or better. And if you're worried about what does better mean, you maybe instead would say Class 2 or Class 4. And I, and the town engineer maybe can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Class 4 is a separated bike lane from traffic, which I would consider better than a Class 2. So I wouldn't limit it to just a Class 2. If Ms. Peterson wanted to just respond to that, if that's okay with the mayor?
Yes, thank you. The Class 4 is a separated bike lane. That's correct.
So those are my two, two requests, or maybe it's three, however you count.
Okay. I'm counting them as three. So I'll take the trees first. And just, I'm just going to do this systematically, anticipating that in case we need a record. These were suggestions that were originally made by Mr. Rennie on September 1st, and they can be found at our transcript on September 1, 2016, at pages 85 to 90. I am fine with the suggestion with respect to the trees. My only concern, and I would put a caveat in the condition, is that I think the applicant has agreed to that, but that the, whatever trees are chosen are planted in a number and at a height sufficient to affect both a visual screening and an air quality screening, because that was actually brought up at the discussion in September as to whether or not they were needed for air quality screening. Then with respect to the E and G for the flats that are more senior friendly, I would agree to that, bearing in mind that these are not age-restricted, so they are more attractive to necessarily maybe a senior, but that doesn't mean that they were age-restricted to a senior purchaser. Then the separated bike lane, I believe that the, let's see, let's see what the, blah, 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 blah. So what Mr. Faber said on page 2, paragraph 8 of his letter with respect to condition 87, was that there be a rewording that's clear in not requiring a Class 2 bike lane on the project frontage where there will be a multimodal path. So the language should read Lark Avenue Bike Lanes, a 10-foot multi-use trail, et cetera. Mr. Rennie, is that language okay with you, or do you want to include Class 2 or better?
So I bel, so what I, I believe the applicant was saying was they didn't want to be forced to put a bike lane on the street in front of the North Forty that they already had a better solution that ran through the North Forty. I'm, I'm okay with that. For the rest of the bike lane that continues from the North Forty down to the Creek Trail, I was suggesting that it doesn't have to be limited to a Class 2 if somebody got the desire to make it a separated Class 4, which I consider superior.
Okay, so I, I will accept that. And I'm assuming that that kind of change can be in my motion, for the purposes of my motion, staff-approved? And Mr. Paulson is nodding at me.
That's correct.
Okay. So I would, with those statements, I would, would accept your changes.
And, and I'll second based on that.
Okay, so there was a significant amount of information that was discussed. So let's see if there's any specific questions to that. I do have one question of.
Was that, that was seconded by?
By, by Vice Mayor. So let me just make sure I understand. With regard to the, let's start with the, what I think the easiest one was, the bike, Lark Avenue Bike Lanes, which is condition 87. If I could just get confirmation that this in no way affects condition 89, the multimodal path that we agreed to on June 17, 2015?
That's correct.
Okay. So what was just being discussed is what runs outside of the frontage of what's the North Forty, correct?
That's correct. It'll be, the multimodal path will connect into a basically Class 2 or better bike lane heading west towards the Los Gatos Creek Trail.
Okay, okay. Okay. And then I'm going to make two quick comments to the motion. Thank you for working from the conditions of approval that I had forwarded. The reason why I shared this was I wanted to synthesize the comments that I had received to see how we can utilize the tools available to us to better up the project legally and within the parameters in front of us. There were two that specifically I wanted to talk about, condition two, which talks about the architectural as well as use modifications for buildings 24, 25, 26, and 27. And the reason why I asked for this to be included, and the wording is very specific that it's, the applicant may work with staff. If you recall the commission hearings, as well as the council hearings, there was significant discussion on the two buildings that front Los Gatos, wait, yes, Los Gatos Boulevard, and how it just stood out, basically. And what are the options available to us without having to change the entire application? My hope was by providing some flexibility in this language, it gives the applicant the ability to work with our staff at a ministerial level to see if there are options to change the usage so that it's not limited to just residential. There are several options available. Live-work was being discussed, similar to what is in the transition district. And I wanted to provide a flexibility so that those four units, those four buildings, could be looked at without further public hearing, without reducing density, without reducing the, the scope of this, to see if there were some accommodations that could be made. And then the, the other proposed condition that I had put was with regard to the BMP and the timing of it. And I understand that I was going for the gold by insisting that no, basically that the BMP units had to be occupied before any market rate units. As I stated when this was first before us, we had planned for more affordable units on this site. Now, I understand the court decision said that that was a subjective statement based on our housing element. But my thinking is if we are going to only get 49 affordable units, I want to provide some security that those units are built and that we see some progress before the market rate units are placed. Now, I understand first, financially, that makes it very difficult if I insist that that becomes the first, but I do think there's some wiggle room between 1 and 200. And I want some reassurance tonight that the 49 units that are going to be affordable are actually going to be built and occupied before we start seeing the market rate units. And so I'm willing to entertain language that provides that flexibility, but at this point, I feel very strongly that I need some reassurance first.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would like to maybe ask some questions of staff along those lines. I hadn't even thought that I would, the developer would build all their other houses and then not build the affordable and leave us stuck there. So question for staff is what kind of legal ramifications, you know, if that were to happen, or what's going to keep that from happening, separate from any language that the mayor would like to add?
So, so the original language was that prior to occupancy of the 200th market rate unit, that the affordable units be available. So there'd still be 70 units of market rate that may be under construction or may be done, but they couldn't be occupied until the affordable housing was able and ready to be occupied. And so I think the mayor, as she stated, was looking to get those as early on in the process. Staff's concern is obviously that the affordable housing is a component of the parking structure, the commercial piece. We don't have a specific phasing plan. We were comfortable with the 200th unit. Is there wiggle room? I would look to Rob. I'm, I'm sure there is some wiggle room. What that number is, I don't know. There may be, also be a separate opportunity with trying to make sure, obviously, the commercial, that whole structure is going to be built as one, the commercial, the parking structure, and the affordable housing above. So Ms. Perretti, I believe, may have some additional info.
You know, I, I think there's, I think it's admirable that, you know, we want to make sure that the affordable housing is delivered as quickly as, as we can. I think the, the affordable housing is so integral to this project because it's the affordable that is providing for the density bonus and for a lot of other elements of the project. So I think in order for this application to move forward, the developer is essentially already committed to complete the affordable housing, whether it's the 200th unit or sometimes sooner, you know, that will be up to their financial capability. But they can't walk away from the affordable housing. I think we would have some other tools to use if we find suddenly they're walking away and we've provided the density bonus, we've done all these other things. So if we get to that point, you know, we would work with our town attorney to figure out what that remedy would be. But I, the way this application is structured, I, I think we're, they're pretty much committed to having to build those affordable units.
And, and if I could sort of, I think I was asking kind of the legal question, which you were starting to touch on, but, I mean, would we have, let me use the word nexus, a nexus to sue the heck out of them if, for some reason, they built 200 units and then never got around to building the affordable units? And what if they went bankrupt before they did it? Okay, what if they not bankrupt, they just lost interest and went away?
So the incentive is, is obviously to pick a number that, that guarantees that that happens. We can't predict the future, yes. They could be halfway through and file bankruptcy. Whoever picked up the property through the bankruptcy is going to be subject to the same conditions, though, and have to, if it's 200, have to build those units. But they could come in at a later date. One of the figures to look at is, is, is the density bonus in the 87 units for the density bonus and back those, that number out, because that's what they're being granted by doing these affordable housing. So if they don't do the affordable housing, those units certainly could be. So there's a, there's a nexus between the number you pick and then when that requirement is. And I haven't done the math there to figure that out, if you're following me. That might be a different number than the 200. I think it's right around that number, but Joel might have it. That was kind of my thinking. But there isn't any objective standard to this, and if you pick zero, I'm sure the applicant would be back in court saying you have, again, de facto denied me because you've made the project infeasible because I can't build the parking structure and the affordable units from a financial standpoint. So what that number is, is no. I don't know it. The, the staff felt 200 was good. I think we have to have a justifiable reason for the number that you do pick, though.
So I see Mr. Paulson doing, I think you were doing some calculations. Do you know, if you were to take the eight, hold on to the 87?
So the density bonus is actually 83.
Okay.
So of the 270 market rates total, that would get you back to 187. So not much less than the 200, but that would be a little bit lower than the 200, so 187.
Okay. Councilmember Johnson?
To follow up, as the person who made the motion, if I, and talking about the difference between 187 and 200, and looking at Mr. Faber's letter of August 1st, in addressing this, he makes a statement that changing that number would make the, quote, "make the entire project financially infeasible," quote unquote. And one of the key legal phrases, again, going to legalities for the state density bonus law, is if you do something that makes the project not feasible, then the applicant is able to either ask for concessions, changes, et cetera. But if we were to add a condition, which I've said earlier that I don't think we necessarily have the ability to do, and especially one where the applicant has come forward and said, "You would now make my project not feasible," I think we run a substantial risk of further litigation.
Any further comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Specter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Put this in a little, at least for me, a little bit of context, the motion. What we're looking at, which was in our packet, is an Attachment 12, which was a resolution for approval, then Exhibit 12A, which was the findings supporting that, and then Exhibit B, which are the conditions of approval. I had issues with each of those documents. And just to quickly go through it, on the approval, it references the Subdivision Map Act and also the, and also the, da-da-da-da, ANS. And in both of those cases, the court had findings. I would have expected those findings to be included in that document. Then in 12A, which are the findings, there were two, there was a finding I could not have made, which is the property owner cannot maintain the structures as they exist, which is talking about the structures on the property. And then there's a section, which is called Required Findings to Deny a Waiver, and there's numbers one through three, which actually made no sense to me. And then when we get to the last document, which is the conditions of approval, I did not have any issues with the conditions as contained there. I would have totally supported all of the condition modifications that the mayor had suggested, and not just some of them. So that's the specific. I want to step a little bit back up to the general, because the last couple meetings, this council has, had. this council has, had people testify about NIMBY relating to maybe the council, definitely the town. Uh, and I've always found that somebody that uses the term NIMBY when they talk about you, not in my backyard, are trying to criticize you. Uh, and I just wanted to put this in context because, uh, in the 1980s, when I first started working with this town, uh, we, the town, adopted a rent mediation ordinance. We were one of the first to have done that in the state of California. And in fact, when we did it, we had to fight, uh, forces, uh, all over the state of California and we did it. Uh, and then when we in Los Gatos adopted our secondary unit ordinance, uh, we did it, and not only that, we did it, we did it really well. And this past year, we've even strengthened that. Uh, and then we also have, actually, this is my favorite, the BMPs, the below market price units, which requires development in our town to have be below market price units and they're to be dispersed and not obvious, not, uh, obvious that they are lower priced units. And one of the things I like doing is after a project is completed, I love walking around it and realizing that I don't know where the BMP units are. And it's in that line that I, I appreciated the fact that, uh, the specific plan and the general plan that we're working under or that we were supposed to be working under for this application, uh, required 112 low price units, 201 very low price units. Uh, and in 2016, according to the information we had, a low would have cost 523,000, a very low would have cost 327,000. Uh, I'm mindful of the fact that one-fifth of the residents in Los Gatos have low or very low income. Uh, and instead, what we have in this application, and again, if you're going to take this piece of property, which is our last big piece of property, and following in our history of BMPs and secondary units and rent mediation ordinance, uh, instead of having more affordable units, we get 49, uh, senior, uh, units stacked second and third floor above a market. That's what we get. They're not spread throughout the property, which is what we would have had if we had had the BMPs. But what those 49 units stacked above a market allowed to happen is the developer was able to avoid our, our BMP ordinance, was able to get a density bonus, and it was able to get incentives, concessions and waivers. And selling units that in 2016, I'm mindful that it is more now, costing 900,000 to one and a half million, which required income of 150,000 to 225,000 and a down payment of 200 to $300,000. This, um, as I think what was told to us or testified to us about being a NIMBY, you know, um, when you think about it, when you think about the history of Los Gatos, when you think about what we tried to do with the North Forty specific town, the town of Los Gatos is not the NIMBY. It is the North Forty that is saying, "Not in my backyard." And so I want to thank all of the people in this community who have worked so hard on this application.
Further comments? Councilmember Leonardis?
Thank you, Mayor Seauk. You know, this process has gone on for a long time and sometimes I wish it could have just started at the judge's desk and then went backwards. It's like, here's your housing project, forget about all the exercises at the police station where you put the green dots on the board and the general plan committee or the North Forty Committee and all the, the public testimony, right? I mean, it was like pre-decided, it feels, um, in the end. With that said, I realize it couldn't go that way. It had to go the way it went. I want to echo some of the comments that Councilmember Spector said. I feel like, yeah, there's different ways to interpret density bonuses, our BMP laws, they're actually, there's, it's kind of unprecedented. I think this is a case that we don't really have any history. If it were challenged, it could still end up going a different way. I don't know if that will happen, but I feel like, you know, this is a great piece of property. Somebody mentioned economic opportunity. Put AutoNation out there, you know? Let's get some sales tax revenue. It's not going to solve our state pension problems, but in the end, we get a housing project. It's about 12 acres. It's not 40 acres. Has a brick wall in the middle of it that ends the road going through the middle of it. You have a lot of ingress and egress problems. People are going to be doing U-turns on Oka Road, Lark Avenue. Doesn't meet the standards of our BMP program. You've got 22 low-income units that are not being replaced. You are getting 49 very low-income units for seniors, but that's one housing category that's not for everybody. The comments of the public were heard, but it seems as though the developer, in the end, didn't want to listen to a majority of the support of the community. We had a lot of folks come out and make great comments. They were even concerned about people's health. I guess in a way, it's good that it's close to the cancer center on the freeway. Like I said, maybe it would be great for AutoNation to be out there. We'll see who, see who moves in and spends $2 million per unit for the market rate housing out there. I'm sure they'll all go quickly. To me, it seems inadequate to put the senior housing above the market hall. I think that, I understand why it's being done because it's free airspace. It's a free footprint and that was again, used to get more market rate housing on the school district side, the Los Gatos School District side, which is the most expensive side of the development. I recall last September when we had extensive public testimony, we had about 17 or 18 bullet points before it went to the judge of things that we made recommendations to planning commissioner, whoever, that were compromises. Spread the housing across all units, add some more market rate housing, et cetera, et cetera. There was a number of things. None of those things were heard. You know, instead I get a call from the developer that says, "Hey, you know, we got $40 million into this deal and we're just going to sue your socks off if you don't say yes." So thank you for that call and it's a pleasure being up here, serving you and not the people of Los Gatos.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I actually disagree with a lot of the points I just heard. I don't think it's going to be productive for me to kind of address the disagreements. Instead, I'm going to share some of my three o'clock in the morning brainstorm, I think. Um, I, I would say, one, one thing I will mention, and I, you can tell I'm stuck on the senior homes, I actually think it's better that they're built together than spread across the home. If you're, you're putting in low-income units that are families or, or somebody that's not a senior, they're, they're going to want to feel like they're going to fit in. When it comes to seniors, you know, many of them have lost their spouse. So the, the being together, the social part, I think will be important. I don't think that they're going to, it's going to look like these are low-income seniors. I think it's going to look like it's a senior home that happens to be for people that are less, much less well-off. Um, but, so rather than going into some of the other points, let me, let me share my, my long thoughts here from other three o'clock in the mornings. You know, I, I understand that some people have great anxiety over the thought of the North Forty. You know, I've thought about it a lot myself. It's, it's large and the required 20 units per acre is more dense than most parts of Los Gatos. This size and density has the potential effect on the character and charm of Los Gatos. This will be changed for this end of the town for sure. Change can be scary and some people do not want change at all. When you truly love something as much as we love Los Gatos, you do not want it to change for fear you're going to lose some of that lo, love. Unfortunately, or maybe fortunately in some cases, change always happens. Our job as council members is to manage the change in Los Gatos, to guide the change the best we can to keep Los Gatos a place we love. This project has been more managed than one, any one I can imagine, more than anyone can imagine. The specific, specific plan has been discussed and tweaked for years and years, longer than I can remember. It's had as many meetings with public comment, um, that, that it had many meetings with public comment that formed the plan. The current application meets the specific plan and significantly exceeds the requirements in many places such as open space, tree, but tree replacement. Even in the Lark districts, the, then the amount of two-story is twice the percentage that's required. In addition to meeting the plan, I've, I've, I have watched the developer engage many groups over the years, not just, you know, in the last year that we've kind of talked about, and incorporate their current concerns and requests in the project in, in many places, more than I've ever seen any developer ever do. Of course, not everybody's going to like everything in the plan, but there, there sure has been an effort to find the best balance, given all the needs and the requirements. I really think that. Um, a little bit of tangent, I, I read an article in the Los Gatos Magazine recently that helps one think through this worry of how damaging the North Forty development will be on the character of Los Gatos. This, this title was "A Town, Not a City," and the subtitle was "Structures Can't Change the True Character of Los Gatos." A few, of, just a few thoughts from the article that I thought were important to remember are, "Los Gatos is a heterogeneous structural environment with many different structure types and looks across its 14 square miles." But more importantly, we have the look and feel of Los Gatos, not by structures alone, but by our relationships, our sense of commonality, our respect and caring for each other, our civility and our political discourse, our common bond, um, our common bond and identity as Las Gattans, whether we live in the Almond Grove, Belgatos, La Rinconada or Vista del Mar. So I encourage everyone to, or those that feel so inclined to look up the article. There's a lot of other ideas in there I thought that were very interesting. But let me go back to the question at hand. I'm sorry that I'm staking so long. I've got a lot more to go. So it's, it's clear to me this project has to happen for legal reasons tied to our state housing element and that Housing Accountability Act and, and actually for financial reasons. We tried to deny it. It's already cost us 700,000. Another inadequate denial puts us at risk of, for millions of dollars in fines. But perhaps more importantly, the housing is desperately needed in the valley. I think it's, so I think it's time to stop fretting about what we can do to stop the project and start looking forward to the benefits. I, I know that could, can be hard to do, but think about it, doesn't it feel better to think about the positives rather than the negatives? So let me go through some of the positives that I, I see. Um, of course, senior housing is a strong need with our aging population and affordable senior even more so. In 15 years, Los Gatos has produced two very low units, showing how hard it is to produce them. This project produces 49 very low senior units. At our current rate, that's going to take 360 years to produce. I believe this is, this is a huge benefit to our community and to our seniors and it's a herculeum accomplishment. Other direct benefits to Los Gatos is, and I think one of my favorites is actually the traffic-related improvements. The improvements at Lark, um, Lark and Los Gatos Boulevard are slated to reduce the traffic delays at the intersection by 26%. For many years, I commuted down, commuted down Los Gatos, Almond Road and the Boulevard to get on the highway at Lark. Back 10 years ago, it, it would back up for four blocks in the morning. I even had someone slam into the back of me when I had to stop at a green light because the intersection in front of me was a stopped line of cars, uh, for several blocks leading all the way back to the left turn lane. I can only imagine what traffic is like there now in the morning. A 26% reduction in wait time sounds pretty good to me. I'm, I'm also excited about the, the bike lane improvements that we've talked about on Lark Avenue. Um, I know the developers worked with the Silicon Valley Bike Coalition on the design inside the project and on, and on the Lark. And the coalition is very happy with the improvements, um, and are excited that it's, it's going to be a bike-friendly design. I'm looking forward to seeing it and using the improvements. There's also over $6 million worth of benefits to the Los Gatos Unified School District above the usual SB 50 fees. No other developer I can ever think of has offered this amount of money to, to the schools. In addition, property tax from the site is going to bring $1.9 million to the Los Gatos Unified School District and the Los Gatos San Jose Unified School District each year. The property tax will also bring, supposed to bring 800,000 into Los Gatos' coffers to help pay for our police that you heard earlier, or so expensive road repair, bike and pet improvements and personal, and pension liabilities. I've, I've even received emails from residents from the north end of town that are looking forward to the neighborhood serving restaurants, coffee shops and retail. Many will be able to walk there and enjoy the open spaces. The project is nearly 40% open space with 85% of that being public open space. There's, there's space plan that is as large as some of the other, um, parks in our town. So we get another park without having to pay to maintain it. The site is, is planned to produce 14.5 tons of fruit and vegetables and you can buy it at the market hall. There's 1,500 trees that are going to be planted on the site. A final, a final, one final benefit, I'm sure there's more you can think of, but another, a final benefit I want to mention kind of to our greater community, uh, community is the affordable market rate workforce housing is a crisis in our valley. We only build somewhere in the neighborhood of one-third to one-quarter of the housing units that are, as jobs that are generated in the valley. Since we can't afford to subsidize housing for moderate income households, there's not enough money to subsidize that for all the low income, it has to be built at market rate. The only way to make it affordable to all moderate income households is to build it smaller in the Ford, in the form of condos and townhomes. The, this project has 39 units that are less than 1,000 square feet, 23 between 1,000 and 1,300 square feet and 77 between 1,300 and 1,600 square feet. That's over 140 units that are pretty small size. So I think we're really helping the problem. If you're a moderate income person living in Los Gatos, this is much more affordable choice than our median home price that was listed at $2 million in Los Gatos in June, um, according to the, uh, something I found in the Serena Group. The median-priced condo or townhouse in Los Gatos, um, and they, these are ones that are not new, was a million and a quarter in June. I see there are new townhomes selling in Milpitas called Ellis Park, starting in the 900s. That's the same place the North Forty's starting. If the LG worker lives in, or somebody close to Los Gatos, lives in Los Gatos on the North Forty instead of Milpitas or even further away, it significantly improves their quality of life by cutting their commute short and it improves hours by reducing the traffic they would create commuting to Los Gatos. So I realize those were long thoughts. Thank you for your indulgence.
Any further comments? Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and share mine. So, um, thank you, Vice Mayor, for pointing out some positive aspects of this project. Um, I want to just highlight on a couple of things. First, thank you to the community for all the work that you have been putting into this, whether you were officially on the specific plan or whether you were community members at the last minute who have started to weigh in. You know, um, it doesn't matter if you've been working on it for seven years or seven days. Until the project is finalized, everyone has a voice in the matter. What we're learning is that with current legislature, there is a housing crisis and the Housing Accountability Act is changing rapidly to ensure that more housing is being built. And if things continue in the future, uh, based on the bills that are being proposed, more and more discretionary authority will be lost by our town. And so I have to make a decision tonight, tonight, what is the best way to move us forward? I've heard all the pleas, please deny it for this reason, for that reason, and, and there have been very, very important factors that have been brought forward. Legally, however, because they are not objectively stated in our specific plan, in our general plan, those cannot be used. What I've learned though, is that we can use those in the future. So let's take traffic as an example. The studies for these, for the specific plan shows that the residential portion would utilize 25% of the traffic. If we're truly concerned about traffic, let's utilize all the studies that people have been bringing forward and let's focus on the next phase. Housing, I want to reiterate what Councilmember Spector said. This was not NIMBY-ism and I know people want to claim- I know people wanna claim that, it's just as easy to say those who deny it was for NIMBY reasons, and it's just as easy to say that, on the other spectrum, people want to build as many units out of greed. The truth is somewhere in between. We had an opportunity with 40 acres to build 313 below-market-rate homes, and that was the basis for, at least my denial of the first application. A judge has said that that was subjective, and even though those were planned for in our housing element, that that was not objective criteria to utilize. So, that is why I am holding on to those units that we have available to us, the 49. Whether it's the 200th market rate unit or 187, if someone is getting credit for those 49 market-rate, below-market-rate homes, I wanna make sure those are actually built and occupied before the rest of the project moves forward at market rate. If it means that all I get is changing the number from 200 to 187, so be it. But I want reassurance that if all we're gonna get after this entire exercise is 49 affordable homes, that we get it, that we see it, and that we can celebrate the people that are going to occupy it. Now, we have to move forward, and so tonight, I'm in a very difficult position of having to make a decision based on what I wanna do versus what is dictated by the court's decision. And so, as has been said, we can choose to engage in further legal fees, but frankly, I would rather utilize all that money and that effort in looking at what's possible under Phase Two. If we are going to be making any changes to a specific plan, those are costs that will come from our dollars, and so is it better to utilize our time and our resources in looking at the changes that we can do in the future phases? And in my opinion, I think that's what's in the best interest of this town. And so, if the maker of the motion and the seconder is willing to change 200 market-rate units to 187, to change Condition Number Two, so that we incorporate the use, changes to use at a ministerial level that the applicant has agreed to, and this may seem trivial, but I'd like a nice-looking sound wall. The applicant has agreed to it, and it's, again, at a ministerial level, I'd like to include it and look at how can we improve this project? How can we move forward, and how can we learn the lessons learned to better the next phase of the North Forty? Because, as I've said many times, this is 40 acres. We've been focusing on the 20, and at this time, I think I'm ready to look at how can we improve the northern 20 that's before us. That is frankly more daunting if we're looking at simply traffic. So, that's where I'm at. Yes, Councilmember Johnson.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, you would like the motion to be altered to, first, Condition Two, simply the use of the units on Los Gatos Boulevard, not the architecture, correct?
Correct, and it would include the language that the applicant has agreed to.
And that I can accept as the maker of the motion. With respect to the sound wall, what I believe I just heard you say is that if there's a ministerial way to work towards a more attractive sound wall, that you would like that included. I am fine with that, but I do not want to send it to the Arts and Culture Commission for review. So, if you're willing to accept a consultation with staff and working with landscape architects, et cetera, I'm willing to accept that.
Okay, and before we move on, I'm gonna look to staff. How does one, this is now a subjective area. Would you look at the plans and decide what's more appealing to you?
It would be totally subjective to the satisfaction of the Community Development Director.
Okay.
And if it makes you feel better, there's a landscape with the plants that is in the conditions that were suggested by the mayor that's incorporated into the motion, and we can also include the consulting architect in the review, as with the planning director for the sound wall.
That would be appropriate.
Okay, so I'm willing to accept that, and I hope Vice Mayor is paying attention so he can decide whether he's gonna accept them as well. And the final requested change was the 187 units before, 187 market-rate units, I'm sorry, changing the threshold from 200 to 187. And I know that I have a letter from Mr. Faber that says to change that number is not acceptable to the applicant, and I'm hoping he looks up at me, Mr. Faber, as I decide whether or not to accept the 187. He's telling me that that's okay, so I'm willing to include that in my motion as well.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
All those changes are acceptable to me.
Okay. Any further comments from any of the council members? Yes, Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now, in the days and weeks leading up to this meeting, after the court's decision, there's a lot of stress inside this person. How are you going to vote? What parameters, what latitude has the court given you? And so, and within that parameters or latitude, what are you going to do? And so, I've given it a lot of thought, which is why I read the law within the court's decision carefully, in order to decide what latitude I had, what latitude I did not have. I felt very comfortable that I had latitude within the conditions, and I thought, well, if I have to approve it, then I can add conditions that were important to this community. Conditions possibly from Mr. Hudes or Ms. Hanson, and by the way, thank the Planning Commission for weighing in. There were a lot of helpful, a lot of helpful information there. From Ms. Buxton, from Dr. Wiseman. So, I was looking at all the, all the conditions that you had selected. I looked at the latitude I believed and I felt that we had, and that's where I was going to go, was going to go with the conditions. That's why it was not hard for me to accept the conditions proposed by the mayor, and quite frankly, I was looking at her conditions in a vacuum. I was looking at what I thought about her conditions, not what the applicant thought about her conditions. And so, given the time, the one or two weeks or three weeks that we've had, and given what we had leading up to today, I felt very comfortable that I would be able to approve this application with tweaks to the resolutions and with a change to the conditions. And if you wanna talk about what kind of housing we need in our town, in our region, in our city, well, it's not very hard, because on the front page of two newspapers in the last two days, and what they're looking for is housing at $500,000 or less.
Councilmember Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor Seauk. As was stated earlier, we need more housing in the valley. We'll never have enough. Probably, we'll never have enough water supply, or electricity grid, or sewer systems, or school systems, or road systems. It's one big pile-on in Silicon Valley lately, and it's because of the economic engine of Silicon Valley, and it's something that communities such as ours, that are quaint and nice, and kind of a little bit of escape from the hustle and bustle of some of the larger cities that surround us, are now feeling the encroachment. So, I just wanna thank everybody who came out and spoke on behalf of our town, and our way of life and our quality of life. I'd like to thank my fellow council members for their jobs up here, sitting through all these hearings, and our staff. I'd like to thank the developer for making a significant investment into our community, which I think will be voted through in a few minutes. I would like my vote to be recorded as no vote. I've sat up here for six and a half years. I've provided feedback. I've provided ideas, and I feel like we've done exercises. We've rewritten the vision statement, which probably should've been written by the people and not the leaders. We've done all kinds of things. We've had all kinds of ideas. We've had all kinds of information, and there were good times when people listened, and one were to believe that things were moving along kindly. When it got to the situation of a lawsuit, it became very ugly for me. I don't really believe that should ever get to that point, a lawsuit or an initiative. I always believed there is compromise, and a project should listen to its community. I know that that view isn't universal, because there was members of the community that thought on the side of the developer as well. But from my point of view, I'm just glad this is all ending, finally, one way or another, and I want my vote to be no vote, like I wasn't even here for six and a half years. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna call the question, and again, I wanna thank everyone. I think it's evident, it's a very difficult decision for all of us. And again, what I am hopeful is, as a community, we make a decision, we move forward, and we try to, we try to respect the votes that have been made, and that we do what we can to make the next future phase a phase that we can all be proud of. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. It passes 3-2 with Councilmember Specter.
No vote. It's just no vote. It's not an abstention. It's just no vote at all. I don't even exist. I wasn't even here.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, let me clarify then. So, I have three in favor, one opposed, and one abstention. Is that correct? I'm looking to everyone.
It's not an abstention. It's no vote at all. It's just no vote. Is that an abstention?
It's an abstention.
Okay. I'm looking at the clerk. Okay. Okay, and so, Ms. Prevetti and Mr. Schultz, can you walk us through the next steps? I think I mentioned prior that we are looking at the moratorium on August 15th, but I wanna focus on what's the next steps for this particular application?
Like you said, I'll be preparing the return of the writ, which will include the resolution, the findings, and the conditions of approval, and that will go back to court. Assuming that the applicant has agreement that we've complied with that court order, then that will end the litigation. We do still have the issue of motion for attorney's fees and costs that is ongoing, and I'll keep you appraised as to the outcome of that. And then, after the moratorium is in effect, so a moratorium requires four-fifths of vote. It's approved, if it is approved, it would be on the 15th of August. It has to come back 40, within 45 days for another vote, which can extend that up to 10 months and 15 days. Both of those have to be four-fifths votes, and there's certain findings that we'll have to make to be able to do that.
Yes, Councilmember Specter.
Clarification. Is the moratorium agendized for August 15th?
Yes.
Do I hear a yes? Okay. And then, do we have the revised specific plan agendized?
We have a working date. I think staff would like to wait to hear what our council says regarding the moratorium and some next steps with respect to the amendments. The Planning Commission General Plan Committee did a lot of work looking at the specific plan as a whole. Now that we have an approved application, there's going to be some work with respect to that, so I think we would like to, you know, keep moving at a timely pace. But again, I don't wanna presume where the council's gonna go with any direction that might be part of your discussion of the moratorium.
All right, then. Again, the items can be agendized by the mayor or by two council members, because the specific plan amendments have been out there now for like nine months since they left the Planning Commission. This one council person would agendize the specific plan amendments for September 5th.
Unfortunately, we have Bella Vista, as well as cut-through traffic, and do you recall anything else that? What I propose is we bring this, tomorrow is my one-on-one with Ms. Prevetti. I know there are certain hearings that have been under appeal that we legally have to attend to first, and so as soon as we can get the specific plan amendment on our calendar, we will do so. Okay? Councilmember Johnson.
Just a procedural question regarding any potential moratorium. The code section requires that four out of five council people vote for it. If there are only four council people here, what happens?
It would require all four.
And if it's three to one, it fails?
Correct.
Thanks.
Okay, any final procedural questions? Okay, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.